Good evening, this is Mary Kay DeCorcia, the Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. And I'm calling our Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, June 4th, 2025. This is an open hybrid meeting of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It's being recorded at our Public Library in Marion Room. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Public Division. Is anyone else recording this meeting? Permit me to confirm, oh, I'm sorry. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the Auburn Town website on Monday, June 2nd, 2025. That includes the link and dial up information to access this meeting remotely. Permit me to confirm that members of this body and persons anticipated on our agenda are President Matt Toth, Erica Briesacker,
Present.
Vera Corain,
Present.
Nan Johnson,
Present.
Lindsey Baker,
Present.
And I'm Mary Kay DeCorcia, and President, APL staff. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Michael Zeller, APL Director,
Present.
Excellent, so everyone is here. So if I can turn everyone to the agenda, the order of the agenda will include a review of our minutes from May and our reorganization meeting in May, public comment, an update of our strategic plan from Mike and Lindsey, Director's Report, and then we've been asked by the Town Clerk to review agendas for ADA compliance and discussion, possible votes and discussions about, you know, which agendas we prefer or we advise. And then our next meeting is a SOAR meeting that is part of the strategic plan, which is going to be Monday, June 9th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. That's a hybrid meeting. And again, that is the next scheduled meeting. So I'm just going to turn to the first item on the agenda. If we could review the minutes, thank you, Erica, for providing those. Okay, beginning with the May 14th minutes, does anybody have any comments or corrections before we take a motion to approve?
I have one comment, just a spelling thing.
Yeah.
On page three, I only made it to page three, so. On page three, though, Jared's name is actually J-A-R-A-D, and Caitlin is C-A-I-T-L-I-N.
Okay, so J-A-R-A-D.
Yes.
And C-A-T-L-I-N.
Yeah.
I took a stab. Do you want a little more time?
No.
So I will spelling as the. Any other comments about the content of the minutes?
Motion approved.
Okay, second, so we'll do a roll call. So Matt is yes, Erica?
Yes.
And yours, yes, Nan Johnson?
Yes.
Lindsey?
Yes.
And I agree, so that's 100% excellent. Now we'll just take a quick look at the reorganization.
Thank you for that. I won't get it wrong, okay?
No, thank you. Has everybody had a chance to look at the reorg?
Do we have a reorganization?
Yeah, we'll be right here, I'm sorry.
Last two pages.
It's just the date of it was, wasn't the 14th, when was it?
Oh, did I not change?
That's okay.
The 22nd.
22nd, yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, I think that's the only thing that I missed.
I will fix the date.
Yep.
Motion to approve?
Second. Excellent, I'll take those, and Matt?
Yes.
And Erica?
Yes.
And Nan?
Yes.
Lindsey, yes, Vera, yes, and yes, I agree as well. So there's both, those are approved, excellent. And do we have any public comment? We do not have public comment, so we're going to move to item three, update of the strategic plan, Mike and Lindsey.
Does Roger want to be? With our guest, our guest, Claire, Roger.
Roger.
An important number at the Auburn.
Yes.
Go sit down.
All right, Roger, thanks for coming. So I'll turn it over to Lindsey and Mike.
We're going to start.
Did I spell your name right this time? L-I-N-D-E.
S-A-Y. Yes, you got it. Where do you want to start?
If you want to, I have some notes about just leading things.
Yeah, go ahead, start there.
So we had a very successful strategic planning advisory committee meeting on the 29th. We met with our committee and with Barbara, the consultant. We started out just giving some history of the Auburn Public Library and also some kind of trends within the library community. And then opened it up to the floor, or Barbara laid out the timeline for the strategic planning process. And then we just kind of opened it up to folks to discuss ways of like getting our community survey out there and just generally promoting engagement with the library. I don't know if you have anything that I add to?
No, I thought it was a good initial meeting. I think there was pretty good participation from all of the members. And I think I'm looking forward to doing a community visioning session. I think that's going to be maybe a more, a richer conversation. We mostly just went over a survey that had been circulated before the meeting. So I feel like it was, it was just hearing from everyone a little bit.
Beginning, a beginning.
But the next, I think the next session, I'm hopeful, will be a little more rich conversation about where we see Auburn writ large going. I think we got a little stuck on like the library as a building. As opposed to like the library, the vision for the library and the community. So I'm looking forward to the next conversation. I thought it was, it was a good start, though, and I think it's a good group.
Yes.
Good mix of perspectives, so, yeah, it's good.
Yeah. Our community survey launched on Monday, the 2nd, and it's already done. I don't know if you've looked at the response. Yeah, it already has a, shockingly, in two days, or three days, I guess, 89 responses.
People have things to say.
Yeah, yeah.
You just have to ask.
Like good things.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I didn't do a deep dive.
I haven't dug in yet, yeah.
Yeah, no, it seemed mostly enthusiastic and engaged. This, I mean, this one is less, we've been running the paper satisfaction survey for a few months. That kind of gathers data about where people think we are now, where this is a little bit more forward focused and, you know, where do we want to go. But, yeah, so that'll run for a few more weeks, it closes the end of June. Is it the 26th or the 28th that you said?
I can't remember, I think it, I think it was depending on even the number of weeks, I don't remember.
She had asked for all the paper to be input by the 28th, so we'll say loosely it's finishing on the 28th. We're also looking for new places to distribute things. There's, we've talked, Lindsey and Barbara and I have talked, and we also talked a little bit at the planning committee meeting about ways to distribute it, so it's just finding the time and the means to get that out there.
We're going to try and get that to all town meeting members. I know it looks impossible with the mailing, but, and then a return in the mail, but I think that would be really helpful.
And that was something we talked about, was reaching out to the chairs of each of the committees in town to just say, could you via email circulate this? You know, it is just a link that can be sent around, so we're hoping that, yeah, it's easier to collect the responses than by transcription of the data, so, so we had talked about that. And then, you know, there's some paper copies out at your desk, but there's QR code. And I know Jared put a lot of work into making some like advertising, it's up on the website of the, for the library. So.
It's on the town website.
On the town website, yeah.
We posted it on social media, and I know a few of the other town departments have either, you know, flagged it or shared it via their social media. I sent it out via email to all the department heads, so they've posted copies. Any of the public boards and boards around town, various buildings. It's posted all in there. Andrea is reaching out to the schools, we're going to try to get, you know, some postings in the schools, but also get it sent home with all the parents, kind of get it in front of the parents, so.
Yeah, and Kristen Papas had a lot of great ideas, she's on the advisory committee. She suggested a lot of great places and offered to do a lot of outreach herself, so, yeah. So hopefully we've got a good number of responses, and I think we're shooting for 400 or more. To beat the record from last time.
Well, you know, in three days, it won't.
In three days, we've already put a pretty good dent in that.
Can I interrupt the flow for one second? I just realized, I didn't hit record, Chris, I know we're live streaming, but I didn't hit, I forgot to hit record.
Oh, just hit it now.
Okay, because, I mean, we're live, but I just, again, my mistake, guys, apologize, thank you.
Sorry, hi, from now, and we're official.
Yeah, start over again. I have some updates about when next events are, but I wasn't sure if there's anything else.
Yeah, no, I just had a comment on the SOAR, but I think that's the next update.
Yeah, so that's going to be the evening of June 9th. That's going to be the board and a number of the folks from the Friends will be participating in that. On the 12th, it's going to be the second strategic planning meeting.
He's fine.
Can you sit down, please? Thank you.
June 12th. Can I ask a question about that? So it's hybrid, so we could physically come or we could tune in at the meeting, right?
Yes.
Because I think I'd prefer to.
What is your preference?
The two.
Barbara has a very strong preference to do it virtually, only because then it's easier to moderate, to see like who has enhanced and that, but, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, I'll accept that as well. I just, I'm very interested in meeting everyone, too, but, okay.
Yeah, it's, the only issue is like, like Lindsey.
Yeah, I agree.
There's how we kind of split things up. And then we have tentatively planned on July 1st, it's going to be the staff SOAR exercise with the Massachusetts Library System. That will be physically present at the library, so.
And then I just wanted to mention on the topic of the SOAR, because we did announce, you know, we're having this joint session with the Friends, but I did confirm with Ginger, who is the Town Clerk, that it does not constitute open meeting because it is a brainstorming session. She explicitly said, as long as it is, you know, forward-looking, brainstorming, not about current business, that it would not constitute a violation of open meeting law for it being a closed session of the two, of the two parties. So just to put that on the record.
We'll get a link for that meeting in the night.
Yes, I'm actually, I think Barbara asked me to send stuff out, so I will probably do that tomorrow.
Okay, that's it?
That's.
That covers it.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, so.
Take the survey, do the survey.
Yes, exactly. Please share it with everybody else. We should see about getting that posted on the town's cable station, too.
I shared it to one of the Auburn groups, I'll share it to the other two Auburn groups.
That'd be great.
Yeah, anybody you can share it with, especially if there are folks who are not regular library users, that would be great.
Yeah, I think targeting community that could potentially come but does not.
Yes, yeah, we definitely want to do that kind of outreach.
Do you notice in the survey results yet, like people have been responding about focus groups?
I don't know, I didn't do that.
I didn't know what kind of either.
Looking at a lot of if people were like in town or out of town, or library users and non-library users, is mostly what I was looking at, and it was predominantly library users that were asking. Unsurprising. We did change the, we've retired, temporarily retired the paper satisfaction survey, so anything that used to link to that will now link to the community survey.
Great. So we can move on to the Director's Report? Very good, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have, because we met so recently, I don't have extensive updates for things, but I don't know if anybody has any questions first before I get into my few little dates.
I really like the data. So do you mind if when you're sharing out, you just share it aloud or I'll share it aloud?
Um, yeah, sure.
Because I just think it's awesome.
Yeah, sure.
It's impossible, that many visitors, wow.
Yeah, yeah, so, oh, you know what, it might actually be a little bit less than that. But we'll say it's probably more like 3,250 visitors.
Okay.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta adjust that, yeah. Our, our data counter doesn't, doesn't automatically split it in half, so I've been doing that and. But we did, we did loan 7,600 physical items, we loaned 2,369 eBooks. We fulfilled 1,396 holds. We hosted 35 events with 502 attendees, we loaned 98 museum passes.
I just see that.
And hosted 507 computer sessions for 322 hours.
Excellent.
What kind of computer sessions are they?
So those are using our public computer, so if somebody logs in or if we log them in to use the public computer, so, I mean, it can really be anything that they want to do, but it's, it's.
Some kind of help.
It's, well, it's usage of the public computers, yeah.
We're going to keep this, we're going to frame it. Compare it to the last one, Rover, we won't see you for the summer, right? So we'll let it build, summer it'll be building.
We know where he'll be, we can avoid him.
Yeah, I mean, however you want me to, I can do a final one during the summer, or I can do monthly ones. I've, in Shrewsbury, we used to post them publicly, so we would do monthly ones even when there weren't trustee meetings.
You know, that's a great idea. I was thinking that, too. Is it possible we could do that? Because I think that's great monthly feedback for the, for people that get constituents or the patrons. But it's also, if you post it somewhere visible, you know, for people who come here but don't really think about museum passes or who don't really think about eBooks or alternative things that appear on this page, might post them, read it, and learn something new. I agree.
At a minimum, it would make a good Facebook post.
And for taxpayers to realize that this is, this is an important.
It's vital, it's just, it's living, it's really important, the numbers of people. So who is it that doesn't come here? They're missing.
Agreed.
Yeah, no, it's, I think it's always, when I gave my little presentation a few weeks ago up at Town Hall, I know afterwards a few of the other department heads had said like, oh, you know, we had no idea that the library was this active. Yeah, I mean, every, I've worked at a lot of libraries and they all, they're all busy places.
Excuse me, Mary, can you unmute?
You mean, you want to hear what I have to say? Is that just me?
Down below, keep going down.
Oh, there I am.
Right there, unmute.
Okay.
It means anybody who's in the stream can hear us now. And please don't scare over.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
But, yeah, I mean, I'm very happy, we used to do these little signs in Shrewsbury, I'm very happy to put those together. They don't take that much time.
Great.
And I've been posting them in the lobby, but like we said, I think I put a little note, we'll start posting it socially so people can see, you know, how active we are.
And what they're missing, if they're not coming in.
That's right.
Yep, yep. Any questions about anything with that or the budget before I do want my little?
Budget? How much is left? 52,000?
Been covered.
It's, it's, yeah, there's 52,000 encumbered, but a lot of that you can see is payroll, so that's all, you know, pre-existing. There is, there's actually 135,458 still unencumbered. And I think most of that, again, is payroll, and a lot of that is because positions were vacant for chunks of the year. So I did just come from, literally just come from a finance committee meeting where I moved some of that over, that's what I was moving over to, to supply, so I could, we could purchase new furniture, we could restock a lot of our supplies. But, yeah, I mean, a lot of that is just, it was because positions were vacant.
Thank you.
Any other questions, then, not a lot, I shifted on some of the lines, just because it was fairly recently that we had a meeting, and also with the holiday, we didn't get payments submitted on quite the same schedule, so. If we were a meeting in July, it would be a very different.
On the bill's schedule, what is Crystal Rock?
Oh, that's the, that's the company that supplies our water for both the staff and the public.
Oh, gotcha. Most unusual name.
Yeah, I think it's, I think the full name is like Crystal Rock Springs or something like.
That doesn't help. Any other questions?
So just the last couple, again, we met fairly recently, so there's not a whole lot of other updates, but just a quick update on the expansion plan. So we've largely finished our visits to other facilities that we've been looking at. Andrea and I did a bunch over the last few weeks. So we're hoping to start kind of formulating a rough draft that we'll bring to Dory for the plan, and we'll go from there. Any questions about any of that? Oh, yeah, I mean, this will be open in the next few weeks, yeah, that's definitely, we'll probably talk to her next week.
And this is the former sunroom expansion?
Yes, this is, yeah, which is now.
Not the sunroom.
Trustees' room there.
The trustees' room, yes, the expansion. I appreciate. I appreciate the. This is true. Flexibility to rethink that, and the fact that there was a lot of input, that people had a voice to say, is that the best use of, you know, the library? So thank you for that. In fairness, because there have been some questions floating in the community about why was the change made? Because while we might all be privy to it, I think the public isn't, and where this is a public meeting, could you tell us a little bit about why we moved to that much length?
Sure. So I'll admit, from when I first came in, I was a little concerned, just because you don't tend to have sunrooms in a library. They introduce a lot of problems for a facility of this nature without necessarily providing a lot of positive. You know, just with any place that's predominantly glass, you're going to get a lot of glare, you can't really house materials there because you're going to get a lot of fading. You can't really put computers and things there. And also climate control becomes a real challenge, which that's already one of our bigger zills every year. It's for air conditioning and heating. So, I, but, you know, I was new, I didn't want to immediately rock the boat with anything. And not being, especially not being familiar with the background, I didn't know if there was some information that I was just not privy to at present. So I did a little bit of talking to people of the community, and then I also brought in some folks from MLS to kind of look things over, there are people who spend a lot more time in all sorts of different libraries, and they all also did kind of share my concerns and similar things, particularly about climate control and how it really drives up the bill for heating and. And also looking at the building, the reality, as we all know, is this is an old building that does need an update. And looking at, as the results for like the community survey started to come in, a lot of that seemed to be, you know, they wanted more private study space, they wanted more places where they wanted more outlets, they wanted more computer access, that kind of thing, which would all be things that were tricky in a sunroom. Because the other issue was, we really do need to improve the power system in this building, and if we do a bigger expansion, that will necessitate that, where if we did the sunroom, maybe it wouldn't, and then we wouldn't have as many outlets in there, and it just. It seemed after talking with other people within the community, and after talking with other people in the library community, that if we were going to do an expansion, that really wasn't the one that the community wanted or that would be really beneficial to the community. It seems like we need something with more kind of quiet, not necessarily quiet space, but like semi-private space, something with more electrical access, more computer access. We definitely need more, one of the things that we're finding now with Andrea on board doing a lot of these programs is just having the one, I love this program room, but just having the one program room is very limiting as far as what we can do. There's been a number of community members who approached me wanting to do more like regularly scheduled programs, which is, it's just a real challenge. If we have like a regularly scheduled program four times a week, then that's kind of it. We don't, we don't have any other evenings that we can do things. So we're looking now more at extending programming rooms, expanding semi-private study space, seating areas with access to, I don't want to say private seating areas, but areas that are less like right in the public eye, where people can connect to the internet, can connect to power supply, that kind of thing.
So it sounds like the decision was made to benefit community needs and to avoid increasing costs.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I think, because the reality is too, when you do a big library expansion, you only really get one of those every few decades, and so you really want to make it count when you do.
Agreed. And I think to tie it back to the strategic plan, I mean, if you looked back at the written feedback and some of the narrative that we were starting to pull from the last strategic plan, it echoes at the same things, we want more private space, we want more study space, we need more meeting space, right? And, and so just adding one large room was not really going to, I think, accommodate a lot of that flexibility that I think the town is looking for, and I'm suspecting we're going to see some similar effects. There haven't really been changes to the building since, since that survey, so I think it, the timing is good because we're.
Timing is very good.
We're resetting our strategic vision, and the building is clearly on the top of a lot of people's minds.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and the things that we've been seeing in surveys and just in general, public responses are very similar to what I've seen at other libraries, too, you know, a desire for meeting space, a desire for quiet, semi-private study space, more electrical outlet access, it's all kind of what, what people are looking for.
I think we had a policy on the use of this room, not being able to do multiple areas at the time that you'd have that in regular meetings, and that was really to protect the programming possibilities to the library.
Yeah.
Some people didn't like that, but.
Yeah, and even, I mean, it was the same in Shrewsbury, where we had quadruple the amount of meeting spaces what we have here, like, it was never enough, there were always people that wanted to, that wanted to use that space, so. It's, any, any amount of community space that you can add is beneficial. Like Lindsey was saying, having one big open space at the back of the building, you can't really do meetings there because the sound would carry, it's, it's not private.
It's a trustee's endeavor.
We never did, we never did, and we were never really, we never had a voice, and, you know, that was a decision that was made by the former director. So I'm excited that with a lot of input, it was found to be not in the best interest of the community.
Well, and what you're doing is trying to meet the needs of the community, I think.
It's very important. Yeah, no, and I particularly, particularly appreciate that you have experience at other public libraries, and so you can see. And so you can see how the feedback from patrons carries over from place to place. So you have a good handle on what needs should be met.
Absolutely.
Every I mean, every community is different. So there's there's different needs in different communities. But just like my library trends presentation from the strategic planning meeting, there are definitely things that you notice that are just kind of what people in.
Generally.
Yeah, in the United States are looking. Well, we'll say Massachusetts. I think I can say New England. I've been I've been involved in the Library Association for a while. So, yeah, there there are some pretty general trends with what people are looking for in their their public buildings.
Oh, I like it. It's going to be very exciting to see.
Agreed.
So, yeah, hopefully I will have some. If we want to have some meetings over the summer, I might have some more concrete information.
We had one scheduled in August, right?
Is that August, right? First August, the first weekend, the first weekend of August? So that we hope that aligns with your time.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think in the next few weeks, we'll probably have some more information.
I was just looking for the date of that. Do we say August sixth? It would be August sixth.
Saying it's August sixth.
And it would be.
The Wednesday.
August sixth, okay. Very good. Anything else on that?
That's really all the updates that I have. I think you got all the updates about summer reading and even all of Andrea's programs. But I'm happy if anybody else just has any general questions or anything that's come up.
I had I don't personally have a question, but I have a question for somebody else. I wanted to know, what is the process for booking this room?
Oh, there's there's a form online. There's a request form that you can fill out and submit. Yeah, it's part of the policies. That's something when we're migrating to new web posts, which will change the website a little bit. And that's some of the things I'd like to kind of rearrange where that all is. So it's a little bit easier to find.
Excellent. So online booking is possible.
Oh, you can print out the form.
Online booking is theoretically possible in the future.
Yes, that's definitely something that I would like to implement.
Okay.
It simplifies things certainly, so.
Got it.
Excellent. So the next item on the agenda, we were asked by the town clerk to give input on for the ADA in terms of ADA compliance, to look at the way that we format. Our own trustees' agenda is one of the models. The select board agenda is another. The conservation commission, we added as well, and then the school committee.
Do you want me to give any background?
Yes, please. That always, always.
Yeah. So basically, there was a law that was passed recently requiring that all basically all aspects of government be ADA in compliance with ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, particularly like things that are online, which is is great. I mean, we should be trying to accommodate people more, but it it does introduce a lot of complications just because local government is a little bit behind the wheel with that kind of thing. So that involves a lot of like accessibility for like screen readers or things. So for folks who are visually impaired, you know, with images, it needs to be set up so that their screen reading software will describe the image to them. And where this impacts things like meeting agendas and meeting minutes, usually those are PDFs. And PDFs are very challenging for screen readers to process. And so one of the things that the town is trying to do is to get things to be a little more uniform. So that that way there it's it's much easier to make something accessible when it's all uniform rather than trying to make a hundred different formats compliant. We have two years to do this. I believe it's twenty twenty seven, April twenty twenty seven. I could be wrong about that. Don't put that in the minutes. But I believe we have two years to to get this in order. And if it's if it's not, we could be subject to fines.
So Michael, this this really applies more to the computers, access to the computers and some kind of readability?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's the area where it's going to impact the most. I mean, like our meetings will need to all be, anything that's online will need to all be subtitled and so that.
Captured or something?
Yeah, sorry, captioned. Yeah, something captioned. So that people who are hearing impaired could be able to.
Wow.
Read the meetings. So it's it's just to allow people with disabilities to.
Is this easily changed over? We need new software? We've got money that needs to be extended?
Yeah, it is going to be very complicated. But I I think that the fact that we've got two years and also the fact that this this is everybody.
New for so if we start, we're at least getting credit for starting and approaching the.
Yeah, and I'm and I'm sure a lot of public vendors will also start to accommodate this as well. But, yeah, I mean, this this impacts literally everything across all spectrums. So it's 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 a little bit daunting, but it's for a good reason. And we've got two years and there will be like, everybody's in the same boat. So I'm I'm sure there will be changes and updates and the, you know, vendors will accommodate us. So it's it's not as overwhelming. But that's why the town is hoping to find one uniform format for all agendas and meeting minutes and that kind of thing.
Thank you for the background.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's helpful. That makes sense.
It does.
So do we recommend like which version we like best or?
There's features of the different versions that I like. I enjoy the conservation commission meeting agenda. I like the way that on the left hand side, it lists the board members, how to contact the commission, visiting the office. I like that that visibility of all of that in a transparent way.
Okay.
And I like the select board agenda.
Very easy to read.
Very easy to read.
And it's easier to find. You just got links.
Great.
I like this part of it that you talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
Where you have everybody, the numbers are easy. But it also comes up in this, except the membership. I wonder if there's one of these that Denver would know is going to be easier to translate for ADA compliance.
Yeah, do we know? Has she checked that yet?
So this only just came up at our department head's meeting, which was last week. So I I only just learned about this a few days ago. I think everyone is just kind of it's just kind of sinking in with everybody. So I don't think anybody has really voted one way or another. Yeah, it was mostly Dory and Mike Marine, all of the town's IT department head and and Jendu, who were kind of talking about it.
Got it. I'm partial to ours because, hey, but also, no, I like that it's all centered, but it's less busy as well. So it's easier to read.
I think it's just like less the less format, the easier it is. Like generally, it's easier to read, but I'm guessing also easier to set up in a platform.
I would imagine the school committee's form is actually the simplest from the perspective of the person putting it together and possibly to read it. There's just not a whole lot going on. It's really, really straightforward and it's fill in the blank. So I think that hits high notes for every part and for for anyone who might need to interact with it.
It doesn't have any of the information though for hybrid meetings.
Yeah, possibly just that they they might not do them. But I imagine if they did them, there would be a fill in the blank for that too.
In terms of the user friendliness, again, the top of the select board agenda that includes, you know, the law, you know, why it's a hybrid, explaining it, the 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 location, and then the having the the meeting phone number, access code and link, very easy at the top. I like that. And again, it made me think that the other one, as I said, I liked the fact that if you wanted to know who the members are, that they're 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 demonstrated or displayed on on the conserv on the conservation committee. However, this one I find very, very busy. You know, I was thinking, we were talking about ADA, I was thinking how when you want to create something, it should be very simple for everyone to interpret. But I wasn't even thinking in terms of the the technology of of translating it.
Yeah, I mean, simpler will probably be better in this instance, just because it will require less.
Right.
Yeah, if you're having like a description of oral, like an oral description of this, that's complicated.
Yeah, it is complicated.
And I mean, it looks nice, but it's really complicated to describe. And so like, I mean, I think some of it's, you know, size of print is a thing, but that's also that's that's a formatting thing. So so, you know, the other ones I think are better. But even this at the top would be harder to describe.
I agree. So just just.
But ours is probably the easiest.
Ours in school.
Ours in the school.
And the school and the school board.
I do like that the school one one sort of says board or committee. And then, you know, it's a form, so it sort of adds it's if I'm thinking about being read to, I can't see it. Someone just just rambling, meeting to be held as hybrid, Auburn Town Hall, global go to meeting, like none of that is categorized. So I like the categorization where.
There may not be doing hybrid meetings.
Or well, not not specifically the content, but just to say date, May sixteen, right? If I'm listening and I can't see anything, now I know now I'm oriented. Okay, date of meeting, May sixteen. Board committee, Auburn School Committee, building and address, the school committee room. So I I think that 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 is useful, even just saying agenda items and then listing them as opposed to this, which just kind of some of the others just kind of jump right in.
I like those. But when you talk about compliance, I could understand why it'd be much more complicated to do those.
And I think I personally find it distracting. You have to like switch from bold to non-bold. And with their font is, I think, harder to read from a compliance standpoint.
Good points. So less is more is pretty much what we all agree on, right? Is that enough? Oh, we've given lots of feedback.
Well, I appreciate I appreciate that, Michael, that you gave the background and the intent. Because if there wasn't very much expansion in the in the message that I got, so that that's very helpful.
Yeah, well, like I said, I I think we we were all just kind of learning about this. So it's and I I think I think some folks feel a little overwhelmed thinking about all of the effort that has to go into it. But again, it's it's two years.
You're right.
And I'm sure systems will also be created along the way that will assist with all of this. Yeah, I don't think everyone, every community will be required to overcome this alone.
Is the follow up to maybe once we review and approve minutes from this that we then say we agree? And then Mary, you could on behalf of the board pass along that feedback. Would that be fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Erica can summarize it and then we'll say, yep.
Yep. That's what we said.
And I didn't get it all written down, but I'll go back and watch it.
That way it'll be in the minutes and then we can sign off before it gets handed off.
That sounds great. So again, just for clarity, our next the next meeting we have is related to the strategic plan and it's digital and online. Really, that's the preference for that meeting? So that's the SOAR meeting?
Technically, it is not considered a meeting because if it's a meeting, it's a.
Brainstorming.
A joint brainstorming exercise with the board of trustees and the friends of the Auburn Public Library.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification. So that will be, and you will send out the link.
Yes.
And that will be Monday, June ninth at six P M. And then what we talked about was the next formal B O T meeting being August sixth, two thousand twenty five. But Vera, you mentioned when you were walking in that you're back in the office on Wednesdays. Do we need to shift the time of that meeting from six to six thirty?
I would ask that we shift to six thirty at these because traffic has been brutal.
Okay, does everybody is everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, very good. So do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, everybody. And thank you. Meeting is ending at six forty four P M. Thank you, everyone.